It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, January 28th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone would please stand. [inaudible]
[inaudible]
First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone here for being here with us this morning. And thank you all so much. First item is claims, Mr. Carter.
Your are the claims and all new interviewee and all.
Second. Motion to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item four is the vendor list. Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir, the vendor list of all the new vendors, the documentation is all interviewed and it's all.
Will you approve, Your Honor?
Second. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item five is also an action item, and this is to deputize Brenda Lee Guerrero, Diana Correa, Dulce Morin, Anna Martinez, Seida Leja, Maria Oquerra, as deputies for the Starr County District Clerk's Office.
I'd also move in.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item six is an action item, and this is to deputize Senior Deputy Treasurer Annabel Garza for the Starr County Treasurer's Office.
Yes, just a formality.
You want to use the podium for the record?
Just a formality, if you can approve the item, please.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven, also a treasurer's report, and this is for the investment report for October 1st, eighteen to December 31st, eighteen.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, we'd like to table this item. We're ready to report, but we're unable to find the policy for the investment report, so recommendation is to table the item.
Motion to table, Your Honor.
Motion.
Moved in second to table, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is an action item, and this is to allow Community Development Corporation of Brownsville Building Home Program to offer singly, single-family, multifamily housing and mortgage lending to the residents of Starr County. Good morning.
Good morning, Mary Rose. This is Rose. She's the one that's going to be doing the presentation. Can I pass this out?
Sure. This way. Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. My name is Rose Hadamio. I work with the Community Development Corporation out of Brownsville, and our priority at the Community Development Corporation is to assist the community in building homes. We build single-family housing, multifamily housing, which are apartment complexes, and we also do colonias health help. We offer the mortgage lending for the homes that we build, and we also have real estate properties. These are new homes that we have constructed that are also for sale, and we also offer the mortgage lending for that. Some of the people that come to us need help and assistance repairing, restoring, or improving their credit. We offer, through La Puerta, financial literacy workshops. This is something very similar to credit consumer counseling, only they charge more than, oh, by the way, we are a nonprofit. We work out of Brownsville. So we offer financial literacy workshops for the community so that they can help restore, improve their credit, so that they can receive the mortgage lending for their homes. We also address the youth in our community. These are students who have dropped out of high school and are seeking to get their GED. We also assist them with that, and we empower them with the skills so that they can go back into the workforce, not only with their GED, but with the skill when they graduate. And then the other program that I'd like to introduce is also the Community Loan Center program. These are small affordable loans that are offered to the employees of Starr County through payroll deduction. I'm sure you've seen many of the payday loans, car title loans throughout the city. They're very predatory. We are an alternative to that. We offer small affordable loans from four hundred to a thousand.
Judge, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
Are you discussing item nine or item? I think you jumped in.
Yes, sir, well, it's all kind of.
Both have to do it?
Yes. Pardon? Oh, pardon me.
Well, we can go ahead and listen to both of them.
Okay.
Taken.
All right. The small affordable loans, they're an alternative to payday loans, car title loans. We offer low-interest loans from four hundred to a thousand dollars with up to twelve months to pay with payments as little as twenty-three dollars on a weekly basis. Our process is completely originated online, which means that they won't have to go to our office to sign, fax your scan, everything. Everything is originated online, and the payments are through payroll deduction. We also offer the free financial literacy workshops for the employees of Starr County free of charge as well. The good thing about our small affordable loans is that we don't check your credit history. There is no credit history that will be checked. We don't ask for collateral. We won't ask you for your car title loan, and there's no prepayment penalties should the loan be paid, want to be paid off ahead of time.
I'm sorry. Did I understand correctly, you say you don't ask for car titles?
Yes, no, we do not. The money is deposited directly into their checking account within twenty-four hours after we get verification from your HR department that these, the person that is applying is employed with Starr County, and the payments are due in accordance to your payroll cycle. Requirements for approval is that they be at least eighteen years of age. They must be working here with you. We require three months. Some businesses that we partner with require, partner that with their probation period, we require three months they be working here with Starr County in order for them to go ahead and qualify for the loans. And of course, they must have a bank checking account because that's where we would deposit the money, social security driver's license, and references. They simply log on to our portal, and they apply for a loan.
If you deduct them from the payroll, that means you have a hundred percent collection rate, and you don't have a risk of them not paying, right?
Well, what happens is sometimes either.
I wonder if that's fair for the other loaning institutions?
Yeah, and I was going to ask Mr. Canales, and he stepped out. What the law is as far as payroll deduction, for one, because, you know, I guess what I'm concerned about is setting precedents, and then everyone opens up, we open up a flood gate for payroll deductions.
And I haven't asked questions for nobody. I was just reading and listening, saying, well, you're going for the sure kill instead of the risk like everybody else lending.
Well, there is some risk in the sense that if there is an employment separation, should someone quit or resign, or their services be terminated, the county will not be held responsible for collecting that debt. That debt is with us.
Mr. Canales, question came up. Ms. Hadamio is presenting a program that I think is certainly very good for a community, but one item came up, and they want to do payroll deductions on any loans or anything that they lend out or finance. What's the legality as far as that is concerned? Because what I'm concerned about is setting precedents and then other.
I'm going to do the same.
Right.
I don't know at this time, Judge. I'd have to do a little bit of research on that, but just off the top of my head, I can see it being very similar to the life insurance supplements that we have, something along those lines. I think it would be possibly within the discretion of the court, but again, before the court would take any action, I would ask the court to table, and allow me to give me some time of research and make sure that we have a firm legal footing on that.
Okay. Yeah, because the only concern I have is on the payroll deduction. Everything else sounds great, and Commissioner Canales had already informed me about it, and I think it's certainly a good thing, especially the interest rates are low for our employees.
I think it's a, from the bill that I heard, Judge, I think it's a permanent program. It sounds great. That's the only thing is that if you're asking for a little opinion, Judge, I just ask you to give me a little bit of time to figure it out. One week, well, one regular week, two weeks.
We have partnered with many other cities throughout the RGV, independent school districts. We also do housing authorities. We recently signed up with Clínica Amigos del Valle, Valle Aids Council, so we service many, both private and public entities throughout the RGV.
Yeah. And believe me, I'm no fan of these financieras as they get called.
Yes.
I think they're, and again, I shouldn't even say this, but I don't think it's good for our employees or our people to go there. But then again, we have to do what we have to do to make the end, make it to the end of the day. But again, I'm just concerned about the county and, you know, what liabilities we have.
Your Honor, I think, like you said, people who went up to the financieras, they just make a killing out of these people. They take advantage of them, you know? It's just outrageous what they charge.
Right in, right in here, sir, if you'll notice, there is an example of a payday loan versus us. On a thousand-dollar payday loan, we do try to administer a fee of twenty dollars. They do not. However, we give the employee twelve months to pay it back, whereas they would need their money within fourteen to thirty days. Our interest rate is eighteen percent. They don't charge an interest rate. They get away with calling it a finance charge. So how it works is the employee borrows a thousand dollars. They say, sure, not a problem. We'll lend you that. We'll charge you two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, but we need the money back within fourteen days. Well, both you and I know that if we didn't have a thousand dollars to begin with, we're not going to have a thousand dollars plus two-forty-five in fourteen days, but since the employee ends up putting down, putting their car title down, they don't want to lose their vehicle. They need their vehicle to get to and from work. They end up going back to these institutions and saying, I'm sorry, I don't have the money. They usually say, not a problem. We'll give you an extra fifteen days, which is now your thirty days. The second go-around, they'll charge him five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. So now the employee is owing them seven-seventy-five, almost as much as what they borrowed a thousand dollars. This is what they would owe us, a hundred-and-twenty over the thousand, and we give them a year to pay it back, the payroll deduction. That's, that's the alternative to that. All of us, at one point or another, are needing small loans to banks. I visited with Loan Star National Bank, Mrs. Falcone, and she, she works for a bank, and she gives us a thumbs up in the sense that a bank or a credit union is not going to go through the trouble of all of the paperwork for four-hundred dollars or even for a thousand. The lease that the banks lend is two-thousand dollars. That's why she likes our program. We don't ask for any type of documentation. All we need is verification from you that they are employed through the county.
I think it's a good, a good program, Judge, and like the county attorney stated, that he'd just like to think game with the life insurance that we're buying, you know, through the county, so there's no difference.
Yeah, the, I think the only difference, Commissioner, would be, in the insurance, we go out for proposals, and anyone can submit, any company can submit, so we're giving everyone the same opportunity to do business with the county. Where in this, we're not doing it for the other financieras or loans or whatever.
Right.
We're not giving them that opportunity, and that's, that's the only thing that I have on the loan side. Now, if we can pick and choose who we can do payroll deductions, then, yeah, it's a no-brainer, you know, for, it's a, it's a good thing for our employees, but I don't know if we can do that or not.
If one of the Commissioners' Court be to table it, or if you all want to approve subject to my research being allowed into the county.
Okay.
And on this, on the home repairs and all this, what, what are the criteria for any people that wants to, to apply for this, for this kind of program?
There is, of course, with any program, there are requirements that are necessary. The young lady that we visited with, Ms. Villarreal, her name is Arlene, she fell ill. She's been, the doctor put her on sick leave, so she's usually the one that handles that portion of the Community Development Corporation. I will, if necessary, bring an additional person so that they could go ahead and explain that. There are requirements, but what we do is, much like my credit, my income is very different from that of yours, what we ask is that they call, they sit with a counselor. Our counselors are all certified through HUD. They visit with the individual, and they let them know, this is where you're at, this is where you need to be, and then we put them on a path, a budget, a plan, so that they can get to where they need to be in order for them to go ahead and receive the mortgage lending for their home.
Okay. As far as mortgage lending, certainly I understand the income.
Yes, sir.
Having a play in it, but do, assuming that everyone has good credit, would, would everyone be approved, or are there thresholds?
Yes, sir, we do.
Since you're a nonprofit?
Yes, sir, we do target low-income, middle-income families.
I'd also move, Your Honor, to approve the, on item number, number eight.
I second, Your Honor.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve the, the mortgage lending to residents of Starr County. This is to anyone, not, not only employees, it's any resident.
The community, yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion?
It's item number eight, ready?
Item number eight. No discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is the, the loan portion of it.
I'd also move, Your Honor, to approve pending the county attorney to review the legality.
Second, Your Honor. Okay, I have a motion in second approving pending the legality reviewed by our county attorney, Mr. Canales. Discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I will know, Judge.
Okay, one, one oppose. Let the record show Commissioner, and this is oppose. Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten is an action item, and this is to approve an interlocal agreement between Starr County and Border Region Health Center. Anyone here representing Border Region? Anyone know what this is about? Any? Can I have a motion to table?
Motion to, second, Your Honor.
Motion second to table. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item to approve the burn ban in, in the county.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twelve is a action item, and this is to approve the notice of intent to issue Certificate of Obligation Series 2019. What this is, is on the Medina Electric Building that Commissioner Science is, is trying to acquire, we need to issue certificates of obligation. It's really not anything having to do, to commit any taxes. I think what we're committing, Mr. Carter, is the, a portion of the transfer station for the certificates of obligation.
The proposal has been reviewed by the county's county attorney, and he has approved it.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is an action item, and this is to approve a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from Next Era Energy Contractors, and this is to the county. Raina, help me on this one. I believe this is to offset the expenses for the state of the county.
Yes, sir, that's what it is.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
It's one of the sponsors. I have a motion in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item fourteen is to approve the Starr County Historical Commission Board. I don't know if it's in your packet. Do we have the names in the packet?
Yes.
It's pretty much where we've at there before, with the exception of some chose to, to leave.
Some, our deceased judge go that way.
Oh, well, I guess they didn't choose.
No.
With.
[laughing]
Huh?
I know you have them there.
Okay, let's skip over that item while they get that information for us, and, and let's move on to item fifteen. This is an action item to authorize frontier communication to use county property to relocate sewer line for the benefit of the drainage in the Arroyo de los Morenos, Commissioner?
It's, it's word, Your Honor, but I'm going to ask to table this, Your Honor, because we made every attempt to get frontier lines, the company, the phone line company, to come and, and help us with the problem that we have there. We've been at it for about a month, then, for some reason, they, they don't show up. So I told them Friday that, come tomorrow, I'm going to go start working on the drainage pipes for the Arroyo de los Morenos, and I told, I told the representative that I was talking to on the phone, that come, come tomorrow, I'm going to go under it, over it, or through it, but I'm going through. So what am I going to do? I'm going to.
Move to table.
Second, Your Honor. I have a motion in second to table, item fifteen. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen is to authorize City of Roma.
The City of Roma, Your Honor, had asked to put this on the agenda, but it won't be required. I think we can go over the pipe without having to do nothing with the sewer. The sewer is deep enough that we can go over.
So no, no action?
No action.
Okay, so no action needed on item sixteen. Seventeen is an action item, and this is to begin negotiations to hire an appraiser to appraise the land value for twenty-five acres in Los Morenos Ranch, Commissioner Penya.
Yes, Your Honor, let me shed some light on this. We had, I have been speaking with the, the owners of the ranch, and they gave me a number, and then they came back and they changed the number for a higher value, so I feel it's time that we hire an appraiser so that we can know what the land is worth. So I make a motion to approve, Your Honor, based on whoever you decide to hire.
Second, Motion.
Moved in second.
Yes. Hold on, Your Honor. I also want to shed some light, Mr. Canales, how are we doing with the condemnations on the property, but on the south side of the, I mean, the, the first part of the arroyo, the one that Mr. Commissioner Alvarez is working on, sir?
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioners' Court, Judge, in regards to the drainage project, there's been a, a lull for some time now, which is at no fault of the county. The Commissioners have been working diligently, as, as shown by the fact that they're still placing items on this agendas, and my office as well, with the DA's office, have been pushing as much as we can. We do have some constraints, Judge. Basically, what's been happening, and, and recently, social media has taken a little life of its own. Apparently, things aren't moving fast enough as some people would care for. Unfortunately, that's not subject to us. The first step in the condemnation procedure, Commissioner, is getting appraisers, and we've been speaking to the federal programs with Maricela Ibarra, and she's been trying her best to get those requests out, but the GLO, the Governor's Land Office, just basically has stalled us. We can't move on the project whatsoever until we get paperwork done and the extension that was granted to us officially done. I believe, Judge, you just executed those documents that were barely provided to you this last week, I believe, right?
Correct.
I think they were sent back Thursday or Friday. We received them, I think, on the same day that they were sent back. They are at the offices of the GLO. They are reviewing them, and they have explicitly told us to stop and wait until we get these reviewed, then we can proceed. Additionally, as far that, and that's just the first step, Judge, Commissioners, that's just the first step that we're talking about, to get the appraisers. We're not even talking about substance, about moving dirt, or actually filing up paperwork or anything. The very first step, as of right now, we are, are in a holding pattern, waiting for GLO to tell us, go ahead, go forward. You can go ahead and do it. I thank the Commissioners, Commissioner Alvarez, Commissioner Penya, for moving on these projects as, as quickly as possible. People think that, some way, somehow, that because the new election cycle's coming around to 2020, that y'all may have forgotten. I, I know personally that you all have not forgotten a, a thing about the, the individuals that suffered, because you still work almost on a daily basis, if not certainly a weekly basis, on these projects. And our offices are all open to anyone that wants to come by and talk to us. Social media, unfortunately, you know, takes a life of its own, and it's not the proper forum to address some of these issues, and really, truly, it's just a matter of asking. I think if Commissioner Garza had a question, or Commissioner Science had a question, they'd ask each individual, one of you all. And so, right now, the status, Commissioner, is we're waiting. We're waiting for the Governor's Land Office to tell us, you can go ahead and move forward to get your appraisers. Without that, I can't even begin to draft a petition. I need to have an appraisal, a certified appraisal, in order to offer the landowner something, which we have one landowner that we're talking about, and I believe that we will resolve it. I, I think GLO has, has told us that we're going to end up resolving it, that there may not even need, the need to do that.
You're confusing me on this.
I'm sorry?
You're confusing me on this.
I'm sorry.
We're talking, he's talking, asking condemnation. You're talking about the project, the grant?
Same thing.
Same.
Same project.
But, let's forget the grant, and I told the Commissioners' Court, no vamos a ganar, forget it. We got to work on our own. With county money, what happens, why, why do we need GLO? We're going to act on our own. Forget the project, that's gone.
That's the thing, it's not.
They told my mouth of an extension, but we don't see anything.
Well, and that's, and that's, and that's a part. That's exactly what we're talking about.
But we don't need the state to act on ourselves?
Okay, if, if you want to, to condemn, I still need certified appraisals.
But the state doesn't come in?
No, if, if we're going to do it with our own money, which, which honestly, which honestly, I don't think we have enough, quite frankly, but if we're going to do it with our own money.
They have six months verbally extension. Four have gone by.
Yeah, and, and like I said, Judge just basically was able to sign off on the paperwork on that. Yeah, that's, that's the state moving at a snail's pace. I agree completely with the Commissioner.
I think we're to work on our own.
And if we, if we decide to do it on our own, Commissioner, it's an expensive proposition. I truthfully believe that we don't have enough money to do it, but if the court wants to do that, by all means, allow us to hire our certified appraisers, get a certified appraisal, and I have to make that tender offer to the landowner.
Do we have a money figure? Because you're saying we don't have enough money. Do we have a money figure, how much it take?
But we're going to announce until the appraisals get done.
The appraisal, you know, the appraisals we're looking at, last time, the uncertified appraisals that we got back were somewhere in the range of, I believe, forty thousand dollars, I believe, in which the landowner was, was requesting something like sixty-five, seventy-five in that area, plus improvements that would run it into the hundreds of thousands. So that's where we're, we've got the wiggle room there. Well, rather, that's where we lose the wiggle room. And if we don't, and that's without even getting the appraisers. That's the other thing, is that appraisers, they don't want to do anything in Starr County. I don't understand why. We've contacted at least a half dozen, maybe as many as a dozen, and they've told us, no. They don't want to deal with Starr County, and I don't mean the entity, I mean Starr County land. But we're working on it, Commissioner. If we were to try and run the two tracks concurrently, GLO will not allow us to do that.
Because, and the reason is because it's important that the public knows about the grant, that we don't have a million, a couple of million, we're talking about a hundred and forty thousand.
That is correct.
Que vamos a hacer nada.
Yeah, and, and hopefully, that, that'll, you know, we're hoping to.
That'll help us at least to acquire the land.
That's what we're hoping to get from GLO, at least, to get the heads up to get that, quite frankly.
Mr. Canales, I have one question. You said you can't find an appraiser, so it's not going to be done yet, because you can't find a certified appraiser, no matter if GLO gives you the go-ahead or not. You ain't find one yet.
We're going to try. That's.
But, no, but, I thought you guys were supposed to get it done by December.
No, we, we've been trying, Commissioner. The GLO stopped us from actually getting those appraisers. They stopped us to even try to get them.
But if they go independently with the county itself, you still can't get an appraiser, so, I mean, that's the way you could get.
The fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter, if I take that attitude that you have right there, that I'm not going to get an appraiser, then I can't condemn. So that's why I want people to condemn.
To buy this land.
We need appraisers.
We need, we need to, if, if we can negotiate with the landowner ourselves, do we need an appraiser till yet?
I would feel much more comfortable-
More comfortable.
-with an appraiser. Mr. Canales, one question-
Yes, sir.
-that comes to mind by the questioning of Commissioner Alvarez. If, if we go into condemnation with our own money-
Yes, sir.
-do we need-
Before we even start, Judge, we cannot go into condemnation with our own money without a certified appraisal.
Well, that's where I'm hitting.
Okay.
I think one of the issues that we had when we were working with the grant was that the certified appraisers had to be reviewed by other certified appraisers, and that's where the problem came. We didn't, we couldn't find anyone that wanted to review the appraisers that were already done by other appraisers. Maybe it goes back to the philosophy that snakes don't bite each other. I don't know. But, but-
Maybe so. I don't know.
In my age, I say pretty much what I think. But anyhow, if we do it with our money, do we need to get appraisers to certify other appraisers? Or can we just get one appraisal?
I don't believe that that is a GLO requirement, Judge. I believe that's a property code requirement.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yes, we would still have to do the same thing. Yeah, and that's the thing, is that in order-
So, we need two appraisers.
In order to take, literally, for condemnation, as a concept, the first step, the very first step, is having a certified appraisal. Without that, our money, the state's money, the federal money, it don't matter. We can't do anything until I get a certified appraisal.
Let me just assure the people in the audience that we are trying to do something. We have contacted Austin, the Board of Appraisers in Austin, to see if they have anyone that they recommend. You know, we just haven't sat here and not done anything. We are trying. Unfortunately, some things are harder to accomplish than others, and this is one of them. But we're doing our best we can.
I know, Judge, that we've contacted TexDOT. I know we've contacted multiple, multiple places that use appraisers on a regular basis. It's not, we're not just trying to look here. We're looking up in Austin, we're looking up in Houston.
Can we start looking, or you, Judge, both of you, can we start looking into the possibility of acquiring easements and for the owner to retain ownership? In other words, it won't be our property, we just have an easement to go in there?
That is an easement.
By definition.
That is the case.
That would be what an easement is. The, an easement just gives us permission to be on there and to use it. The owner keeps the ownership, yes. That's an easement. What we've been trying to do, because we're gonna, if we condemn, we're not condemning an easement, we're condemning the property itself.
I think we can talk to some of these people, and they're willing to do it. I think it's one, right?
It's just one.
One landowner.
And so, we're exploring all avenues, Commissioner. The only thing is that we've got those, like you said, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are, that are there with GLO. We are strapped for cash as a county entity. It'd be a shame to let those go, so we're gonna try our best to keep them and to serve the public as much as we can. Unfortunately, some of the requirements that the GLO gives us are counterintuitive. We paid less for a piece of property than what it was valued, because the owner, you know, was nice enough to let us, you know, a public service, and they forced us to pay them the appraised amount.
Point of order, Mr. Canales. I think we're discussing something that's not an agenda item.
I apologize. So, just to bring you all up to speed on what we've been doing and how we continue to try to serve the public on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Canales.
Thank you.
Item eighteen is an action item.
When did you vote, Judge?
Oh, we didn't vote on it, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion, I have a second discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Let's go back to item fourteen. This is the, to approve the historical commission board. These are the names that were given to us. If there's any one that you all would like to add or delete, now's the time.
I'm all the way through, Lieutenant.
Second.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eighteen is a permit application for a gas bore under Pimenta Road.
You're there here, Mr. Mark?
You wanna go ahead and identify yourself for the record, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Glad to be here. I'm Mark Frankie. I'm the engineering manager of Matano Energy out of San Antonio. And we put in a request for a permit to bore under Pimenta Road to put a gas line, to tie in a well that we drilled recently on the west side of the road, and to tie in the enterprise's pig station over on the east side of the road, about three thousand feet away.
Mr. Frankie, I was the one that requested for you to be here present together with Mr. Longoria.
Yes, sir.
What is, you represent this company?
Yes, sir.
And what's your authority in that company there?
Well, I'm the, I'm the manager of engineering projects. I see all, see all the operations.
This is my position before we even take any other action. A while back ago, Mr. Longoria came to me and asked if you guys were gonna drill up there, and we requested, and that the road would be maintained as they were or better. And I've signed some paperwork, giving you permission to come in and do work on the road.
Yes, sir.
We have had, hold on, we have had some rains. The road has been deteriorated so much that we got school buses going all the way up there, and they were not able to go pick up their children because of your heavy traffic that went there. They went just in a little passwork here and there, and we have to continue constantly maintaining the road for the people to go through and the bus could go through. I called Mr. Longoria and said, "What do you guys wanna do about the road?" Like, I need to call you, and I think you remembered, a while back ago, that I called you, and you, you sent a gentleman that works for you guys to come and look at the road, what was needed. Do you remember that?
Back in the beginning, if I can go-
Not too long ago. They said about a month ago.
Okay. I don't recall sending someone to, well, I had my pumper go and look at the road when you called me a month ago about the condition of the road. Is that the time you're speaking on?
Some, you said some gentleman, and I said, "Okay, tell him to call me." He called me, and I was on my way somewhere else, and I said, "Look, I'm gonna send my foreman that takes care of maintaining the road. You get together and go look at what's going on and see what do we need to repair." The gentleman came up, got together with my foreman, and said, "Well, to fix this road here, will take about, I would say, fifty trailer loads of caliche." He said, "Okay, I'm gonna request it to the company." And I was, I'm assuming he reported back to you.
Well, I'm not exactly sure who that gentleman was, because we made two repairs on the road when we first came to do work. I called you to ask if you had plans to repair the road, because the people moving the equipment inside, they couldn't use the road because of the condition. And that's when we had the first conversation. And we came out and we, we put thirty-five loads of caliche on the road to repair it so that we could move our equipment over the road. And then later, I think you had called me and asked me about the same thing, the road had deteriorated through some of the use. And that second time, there was a spot up on the second location further north from the first well that we drilled, where there was the road, there was a low spot in the road, and it was getting pretty bad. And so, we came at that point and, and brought in a hundred and fifty-three tons of rock and put on the road and played it and maintained the road. So, I mean, I know that road is, it's just a, in the middle of a field, and if it rains and people drive on it, it's gonna, it's gonna deteriorate some.
I understand, but it was, it was not that, I used to maintain it, it wouldn't, that happened until you all just came in and pushed a lot of caliche out of there. And, and like I said, we got a, we got a family up there, sir, that has a child who's twenty years old, has been vetted since the age of a year and a half. Ambulance has to go there to get that child out there almost on a weekly basis, because he gets sick. He's just there, he doesn't speak, talks, or sees, or anything, you know. He's just, and I have to maintain, make sure that, that traders have knocked down the signs when they go in there. They built some potholes on the, on the, on the road. And like I said, and we need your help, you know.
Well, yes, I understand that. And we certainly wanna maintain the road. I mean, we can't have a maintainer there every day when it rains. And so, I, you know, I think we've put in a pretty good faith effort. We've already spent about twelve thousand dollars in material and time to maintain the road. And, of course, when things happen and it has rain, it's gonna be a problem, and so we'll try to maintain the road as best we can, Commissioner. So, hopefully, you'll be able to work with us. And, you know, like I say, we, we'll try to, we're good partners. We are. We always do our business.
And he promised that he's gonna deliver caliche, and we haven't seen anything.
Well, I think we've delivered quite a bit of caliche to that road.
Yeah, but like I said, but you can't keep continuing going, and it went up out again because of the rain, you know, and heavy traffic.
None of our roads are in the middle of something, but we still gotta maintain it. That's what is getting it.
But then, let's go back to, what I wanna know, are you guys going to come in and provide caliche to help upgrade that road?
I think it would be wise for us and for you that when we're done with our construction, that we'll come and we'll maintain, we'll bring the road better than it was, which we did already, you know. Like I say, we're not in a road maintaining business. I know that's, that's also y'all's responsibility, the taxes that we pay on the production that we do and the jobs that we provide.
But you do have all the way overloaded trucks that came over that road up there.
That's right.
Problem, you know, you got heavy equipment that is outrageous. And that's what screws up all the roads.
Well, I was there this morning, and I drove down the road. It's not impassable, you know.
Right, because I've worked on it on a daily basis almost a time.
Well, I don't think so, sir. I might, don't be disrespectful, but I have people there every day, and they, they tell me when somebody comes and works on the road.
But like I said, I got people calling me on a daily basis, like I said.
Well, Your Honor, I would like for you to, to tell me whether we can bore the road or not. And I think the maintenance of the road may be a separate issue to what we're talking about here.
One, one issue that I have, Mr. Frankie, before we go into that, you know, I wanna think that Starr County is very business friendly.
Yes, sir.
You know, we try and work as best we can with, with any business coming into our community. But I take issue when comments are made. And I believe Mr. Longoria made a comment to one of my administrative assistants, which is the same thing as telling me, that you were gonna bore, whether the Commissioner's Court approved it or not. And I take issue with that, because this is a legal court, and you cannot be coming over here and threatening us that way. So, I don't want for that to ever happen again. Anyhow, that's, that's the only issue that I have. It's up to the court whether they want to-
And let me say, let me go to the process again. Mr. Longoria asked me about the, he wanted to bore. The following day, I said, "You can't do that. You gotta submit your plan and, and it's to the Commissioner's Court, and we approve it before you can bore." He called me back. I was there with him for about an hour on the road, back and forth going. He was talking to you. He said he called Mr. Arnold Garcia, and that he didn't need it to have it to Commissioner's Court, that he had given him the right, the okay to go do it. I said, "Well, if he's got that authority, go ahead and do it." I called Mr. Garcia, I said, "I haven't talked to," he said that you had talked to Mr. Garcia. Mr. Longoria told me that you had talked to Mr. Garcia, and he had given the okay to go ahead and bore. He's not coming to the Commissioner's Court.
Well, let me clarify that. I called the office to find out if I needed a permit. They directed me to that office where there's two Mr. Garcias. There's Arnaldo Garcia-
And Armando Garcia.
Arnaldo Garcia. I spoke with Armando Garcia, and he was the one who informed me that on that road, I didn't need a permit. I would just inform you when we were gonna be there, give you notice so you could come and witness. And that's when I started-
He told you he didn't need a permit?
Yes, sir.
Can I clarify that?
I told Mr. Frankie, excuse me, I told Mr. Frankie that in my office, which I don't, I don't have anything with me there in my office, and I told him, "As far as, as far as I know, what I have here, I don't have anything that I, that requires you to permit." But I told him, "I gotta go to the judge's office, and I'll get back to you later today." Which I went, Mrs. Reyna, with her, and she said, "Armando, they do need a permit." But it was in the judge's office, and I got it back, and I emailed you the permit immediately. And then you returned it back, which is what you all have in your package. But at that time, I didn't have there in my office the permit. So, that's why I went with Reyna. And then I sent it to you immediately.
Commissioner Garcia, wouldn't it be wise that-
Wait, wait, hold on. We're not through yet. Hold on.
No, but, but, Mr. Canales, review all these passes?
Yeah. Then I called, then he called me back, that he, Longoria called me back, said that he wasn't taking it, and that Arnold Garcia had to not do so. That you had talked to the judge, and the judge had said, "Go ahead and do it." And Mr. Longoria said, "It's just, now the judge ordered it, so it's you between the judge and the judge." I said, "I called the judge, I have it." He said, "No, I haven't spoken to Mr. Longoria about that."
Well, maybe there was some miscommunication. I, I didn't speak to the judge. I, I think-
He told me that he had permission from the judge.
I believe it was a misunderstanding. They had, they had, we called the judge's office, therefore, they got the expectation. And therefore, you can confuse. I had not spoken to Mr. Garcia or-
But that's what you told me, that he had spoken, and that the judge had already said, "You don't need a permit, go ahead and do it."
He was talking to the judge's office with the-
But that's what, yeah, that's not what you told me, Mr. Longoria.
There was a misunderstanding.
No, it was not a misunderstanding. That's what you told me.
Well, I misunderstood a bit.
You what?
I'm not saying that, because I had not spoken to-
I'm not saying you spoke to, I'm not saying you spoke to the judge. You told me that Mr. Frank, Frankie had talked to the judge, and the judge said, "Go ahead and do it."
I probably did say, but I misunderstood. I misunderstood a bit. I'm not backing up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, that's what I'm hearing, because we need to get this straightened out.
Well, yes, sir, I, I agree. And I, there was miscommunications, I think, and misunderstanding. I don't work in Starr County, and I really have tried to do what I need to do by calling, and I filed a permit, and, and, you know, like I say, we try to be good citizens.
You did, you did talk to me, Mr. Frankie.
Oh, I did?
Yes, to let me know that you, you wanted to bring some caliche into a road, Pimenta Road. And I told, my instructions were, "It's got to go through the Commissioner, but I'm sure it will be tickle pink to get free caliche." So, and then he said, "Okay, I'll go ahead and do that." But that's all we talked about.
Okay. Now, that was, that was several months ago?
Uh, maybe a month ago.
Well, if that's the case, and I know we, we brought in already-
But this was last week?
Well, no. Well, your honor, if I may, please, I think I've stated that, you know, Matano wants to do the right thing. We've tried to do the right thing. There's maybe been some miscommunications between myself and your office. We've tried, we've complied as much as my understanding has been, and I, I, like him, I don't understand the process of the county work. But I think the question is, is, the main thing is just permit to bore under the, under the road to hook this pipeline up to deliver the gas. And so, if, if we can answer that, I think I'm certainly glad to continue communication with your office about, about this road.
Okay, so you're gonna come, but the judge not with me?
Well, again, sir-
I'm the major, sir. You need to understand, I have to work out there, and I got the problem.
Well, if it's with you, I'm, I'm speaking with you in general, please.
It's with the, with the Commissioner?
Yes.
And like I said, and if you think, like I said, he, we've been working together, but when it comes to this, that I don't need you, and I already took care of it, that's, it's nonsense. I said, we, I told him, "We need to go to Commissioner's Court, we need to get it approved." And he called me, said, "No, we already talked to Mr. Garcia, it's no problem." And then he called me, "No, no, Mr. Frankie talked to the judge, and go ahead and do it." I said, "Go ahead and do it, why come to me?"
I'd be glad to come to you, sir, if that's, if that's the process. And again, if, if I've overstepped the process, this is my apologies.
The, the process is, Mr. Frankie, you know, that the commissioners, they're the road and bridge experts or authorities out in their precinct. They're the ones that know what roads need repairing, what bridge needs fixing, you know. I certainly don't.
Right.
They're, they're the ones, so that's how, when you called me, I said, "Well, you gotta go through the Commissioner, because they're the ones that know what, what needs to happen." Now, once you, you go through them, then, of course, it comes up before the court, and the court approves the permit or they don't.
Yes, sir.
But, but that's, that's the process. I guess we beat this horse, you know. But we do, we do, you know, one, and I understand the Commissioner's frustration. We, we do need to streamline requests and communication as best we can. Again, you know, I-
What's his authority, Mr. Longoria's authority?
Mr. Longoria is a contractor for us. He has, he works for, through a company that does land broker. And so, he has helped us attain all the leases and the right-of-ways for the permits, kind of is the guy on the ground when it comes to land issues.
But he ain't got authority to say, "Well, I'm gonna fix this road, I'm gonna provide some," but he ain't got no authority like that.
No. All authority of any operation comes to me, and they communicate with me on, myself and another man in the office, who's our land representative, when it comes to land.
And I'm gonna deliver some caliche, I'm gonna provide it, and that's what I wanna know, you know, because I don't wanna keep coming telling me something, and I'll say, "Wait here, let me approve."
I guess, I guess what we, what we need, Mr. Frankie, is, you know, if you can help us with some caliche, that you contact Mr. Commissioner Garza directly without a third person. I think that would eliminate a lot of problems.
Okay, yes, sir.
You know, and certainly, we're here to work with you.
Sure, yeah. And, and, you know, we, we intend to drill some more wells, and I wanna work with you guys, you know, in good faith.
Sure.
Certainly. I don't wanna have an adversarial relationship with, with the county at all.
No, no.
That's not the way Matano ever works.
You know, I, I hope you, you understand our, our stance on this, you know. Anytime we're, we're offered free bays, we certainly jump at the opportunity, because Starr County is-
Sure.
-very economically deprived. We don't have the money that we would like to have to fix all our problems. So, whenever companies like yours, and there've been several that come in and they're willing to help, you know, we, certainly, we appreciate that.
Sure. And, Judge, if I may, you know, just to, to acknowledge that we have made two attempts already to, to maintain this road. And we wanna, like I said, we'll fix the roads when we tear them up. We will, so.
Okay. Yeah, but, but like I said, just make sure you, you go through Commissioner's Office.
I'll, I'll communicate more with you, sir. I'll try to prevent these kinds of things from happening, honestly. happening, honestly.
Because, you know, like I said, I went for a full hour, back and forth to him about this, one hour, that you said, that he said he talked to him, to talk to the judge. I said, "Don't call me anymore, man, you got to go ahead and call me." I mean, okay, or not?
Is there a motion to?
I don't know.
Take it, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All unfair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. It'll be ready soon after the meeting.
I'm sorry?
The permit. Yeah, the permit will be ready about 10 minutes after the meeting.
I would like to mention that there is a $500 people.
Oh, yeah. Very.
And we have.
Thank you. Glad you reminded. Okay, item 19 is an action item, it's to approve refunding on some accounts, account number 99609277294 and 32369. Ms. Alina?
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
This refunds are created for late act use and for granted for homestead senior and vet discount, and letter C is improvement of value lost.
Any questions on those accounts?
I do the move to approve.
Moved in second to approve. Discussion. All unfair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item.
Thank you.
20, well, this next one's yours too?
Yes.
It's to approve extension of deadline on property taxes for forlorn and non-pay federal employees or their spouse. The purpose of this extension being in effect for 21 days. This is just to help out those federal employees of, yes, sir.
On this matter, while I come in, Ms. Alina, I think it's a wonderful thing that she's trying to do to help out the federal employees that were suffering during the shutdown. We are open again, but Ms. Alina, we're trying to cover 21 days after the shutdown. I have an issue, whether it's legally, we're able to do it, I think the court should pass it, subject to whether it's legal, essentially.
Motion to approve based on research of.
Before, before anything.
Hold on a second, I have a motion.
Motion to approve based on Mr. Canales' research, if it's legal or non-legal.
And I have a second, now discussion going.
Okay, it's not specifically stated in the tax code, but I have a letter here from Cameron County Tax Assessor, which sent it to the government, stating that he did a recommendation to, to extend, I spoke to also to STC, and they're waiting to help us on this, to help the federal government, federal employees, of course. And this is a letter we have been, we're waiting for their response.
Yeah, I got notified, Ms. Alina, is the same thing Mr. Canales is mentioning, that it might not be legal to do this. Now, STC also called, and they were under the impression that we were going to pass it for everyone that we collect, and I said, "No, this is only for the county, we cannot authorize for anyone else." So then they said, "Well," then they, they didn't say no, but they said they needed more time to take it to their board and see if they would approve it. So, STC is not a certain, yes, but they did bring up the legality.
I think it's a wonderful thing that Ms. Alina, I really think it's great that she's doing it, she's looking out for the employees and federal government who are going through a really tough time, and if we're able to, Judge, I think we should, but I'd like to pass it subject to.
Yeah, and, well, I have a motion in a second, and going on that, I might be partly to blame for this with Ms. Alina, because she did come to my office to ask me, and I told her we've done it before. I recall a few years back, when the statements, the tax statements were not done on time, so then if the court remembers, we move the 3% to November, 2% to December, 1% January, and then February they could pay without any penalty. So, we had done it in the past, so that's what I remember, so I told her we could, but I think that's a wise motion to wait until it, to find out if it's legally correct. How soon can you find out?
I'll be working on it, that's nearly about a year.
Okay, because we need to let them know.
Well, I'll be contacting the tax assessor who sent this letter to the state, and to see what their response is, but.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All unfair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Items 21 through 26 are budget amendments, Mr. Carter.
Yes, Your Honor, the budget amendments have all been reviewed.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All unfair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. It is 10:55, and pursuant to section 551.074, we will go into executive session to discuss our salaries. It's 11:20, and we're back in open session. We discussed only one thing in executive session, that was order our salaries.
Yes, motion to approve, Your Honor, based on Commissioner Alvarez's request.
Yeah, but can we have a correction?
A correction on Commissioner Alvarez's request.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second, discussion. All unfair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.